Please rat. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to start with a moment of silence for Mr. Kevin Turcott, husband of former school committee member and current CPAC director Kelly Turcott. Thank you. This is the August 28th meeting of the Clinton School Committee. We call a meeting to order and ask for a motion to approve the bills. So moved. Mr. Chair. Mr. Devault seconded by Mr. McIntyre. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of August 10th, 2017.
I'll make that motion.
Mrs. Zepantis, second.
I'll second.
Mr. Devault, any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? unanimous, thank you. Tonight we will, in addition to our student report, PTA report, CPAC report, CTA report, try moving our public comment report up to the front and we'll see how it goes and we will reserve the right, I guess, as a committee to amend it if needed. So, we don't have a student yet, Mr. Hastings? And, anything from the PTA?
Can I just say one thing about the PTA?
Sure.
I want to thank them, the PTA put on the breakfast for the teachers today and also some of it will be reused and refreshed for tomorrow as well, so I want to thank them for that.
Terrific. Now, from CPAC, CTA?
We've got an enthusiastic bunch today. The teachers I did speak to were very receptive of Dr. Meyer's vision he's laid out for us. We've got a lot of new members, over 20 new hires.
Oh, great.
Just in line, so, very young, everyone's getting young.
And we stay the same, don't you?
But, yeah, very encouraged by the message sent out over here.
Terrific, great, thank you for sharing. Is there any public comment? Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Alright, so, real quick, I just want to finally give the final report on the Fun in the Sun event. I know at first when that started, I was, I was still panicking about a week beforehand thinking, what are we gonna do with 400 extra hot dogs that we ordered? But, as the Cliffs mania set in, that was very well attended. We had over 700 people who signed in, I think there were many more who actually were there. But, I just, you know, I tried to thank the staff this morning, food service staff, the science department, particularly like the middle school scheme for girls, the robotics club advisor, you know, everyone came out who helped make those different events possible. I thought it was a great day and great to see such a good community turnout.
Thank you.
First day of school, I just want to give a quick update that the first day of school, just a reminder that it's Wednesday, 30th. That's all I can say about that, it's coming quick. The school lunch update, in your packets, you should have a proposal here. And, what this proposal is, is this is a proposal to set school lunch prices for this year. This proposal, as it stands, would essentially call for a 15 cent increase for the paid student lunch for 17, 18. And, before we get into that, we can discuss that, it's really the only part that changes. But let me give you a little background on sort of how our discussions went on this. So I know at one point there was some, some public, not question, but I guess people were curious about the fact that we might be eligible for the community eligibility provision, which would allow for us to offer free lunch and breakfast. So, the answer to that is yes, technically we are eligible for the community eligibility provision. However, you then have to look at where your number falls and if you can mathematically sort of pull it off. So, right now, our free and reduced rate through the direct certification process is about 46, 43, 45? Somewhere in there. And, we can't really control that, okay? The way that the state does the free and reduced lunch now is through a direct certification process which is based on benefits that families receive. It's not really, the forms you fill out doesn't, doesn't apply to that number. So then what the state does is they use a multiplier on that number of 1.6. So our 1.6 multiplier brought us up to a free and reduced rate of about 68 percent. So we ran all the numbers based on the free and reduced rate of 68 percent and it did increase our reimbursement from the state by a few thousand dollars. But then what you have to balance that out with is, you would get a few thousand dollars more in reimbursement, but we would lose all of the cash revenue which amounts to over a hundred thousand dollars in the course of the year. So to offer the free and reduced lunch at this time, given our current direct certification numbers, would result in a net loss of about a hundred thousand dollars. Typically, the magic number, you know, when I was in Athol, we did take part in the community eligibility provision and we were told it's kind of the magic number for that, that ratio is about 80 percent. If you hit, if you can get, if your current number is 68, if you can get over 80, that's typically when it might become feasible. I know in Athol, one of our schools was actually over 90 and that's what kind of made it feasible for us to do it. So, we are technically eligible, we did explore it, we ran a lot of numbers, we had meetings with me and Karen and Dave and Nan and, and we're just really looking at all those numbers and breaking it down and it's just not, it's not mathematically feasible right now. So then we did, we looked at the reimbursement rates. So on August 9th, the state sent out the reimbursement rates for the meals and basically looking at those reimbursement rates, we tried to calculate the total meal price. One of the guidelines is that they do expect that your paid meal and your, you see how the total meal price is all kind of aligned there. And, what we tried to do was work that out so that we could, you know, we could come up with a paid price that's fair, manageable to our families, but gets us close to that total meal price of, you know, it's 335 for free and reduced for lunch with paid, if we increase it to 290, that gets us to the 333. That would help us meet our, meet our revenue needs so that we can, we can go forward. So, basically, breakfast would stay the same, free and reduced lunches would stay the same. It would just be the paid lunch, we'd go up 15 cents a day in this proposal.
Questions?
What's the impact of us increasing the 15 cents?
In terms of?
The financial impact, I don't know if you've been aware of it or is it compared to?
Our total meals served, our total meals served last year was 144,000 lunches. Okay, so if you have 144,000 lunches and you go 15 cents, you're probably talking about $21,000 of the increase rate.
Thank you. Any questions?
How are we doing with the collection? I know a couple of years back, there was an issue with children charging and we set, I think we set pretty strict parameters as far as who could charge and when and different grades and all that and there was an issue collecting back.
Yep, it's improving. I'd say right now, I think our outstanding debt is still about maybe $12,000. But it was, but it had been up as high as like 30. So we've been trying to collect that over, over the past year or so, so, you know, and that debt took years to get up to that. And that's not going to occur overnight, but at least we made some good progress.
My only other question is, I know we're looking at, you know, I'm looking at us, you know, if they pay with cash, which most of our students don't pay with cash anymore, correct?
Well, we have, in terms of, what do you mean?
So actual physical money that they come to the?
Yeah, so most people would use the MySchoolBox, yeah.
Yeah, we have MySchoolBox.
Because I, you know, I was thinking like, you know, if you're at a store, you got the 10 cents, you know, that. But if you're gonna be automating the majority of the students out of a computer account, you know, there's the advantage of taking that 10 cents off.
Any other questions? Are these the projected price increases, are they, are they comparable with?
Yeah, so we looked at some surrounding towns. So for example, you know, Hudson, Leominster, Neshoba, Tingsborough, West Boylston. Right now, all of those school districts are at $3. You know, there's some others that are around there. There, there's a couple, you know, Gardner and North West, South West, still at 275, at least right now. I don't know if they're making any changes based on the information we could find. So we tried to look and I think everyone, everyone's in that range, a lot of people went up to $3. We didn't want to, you know, we were, my rationale was to, I wanted to try to, you know, be as conservative to the families as we can, so I wondered if we're gonna err on the side of a few pennies, I'd rather be below that, that total meal rate than above the total meal rate. So that's why we stayed at the 290, didn't go to like a 295 or a 3, which I do think would be reasonable for the area. But obviously, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to burden families if we can, if we can make it work at 290.
Anything else? So, you're seeking a vote from us to increase the, the cost of lunch for 2017, 2018? From 275 to 290?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Mr. McIntyre, any further discussions? All those in favor?
And I will do, I'll do a one call tomorrow that will have the reminder of the first day of school and the next day I'll also include in that menu, in that, in that one call to let people know that the lunch prices did go up. If you have any questions, you can contact.
And that's also an email, is that correct?
Pardon?
Your one call, is that also, is it able to be sent as an email?
I can, I can do that, I can set that up as an option.
I'm just thinking of maybe new, you know, the new kids coming in.
Yep.
And, you know, your younger kids, if you could have a link to, you know, remind people how to register for their accounts.
Okay, I'll, I'll see what I can do, but I'll definitely get it out. If I can't get the email out right away for one call tomorrow, I'll do it in the next few days, but I'll definitely get the one call out tomorrow. Busing, the only thing I just had a note on here is just to remind people that the bus routes can be found on the website. I know they've been shared a lot of different places, but if people can check it out. I know they've been getting out there because I've had people checking them and calling me with certain questions and I think the bus company has been very responsive, they've been going out and looking at different stops and we've already made a few, few adjustments, or we have a few adjustments that are maybe pending once we wait and see, you know, who actually shows up at certain stops. You know, we have who we expect, but, you know, until, until you see who actually walks through that door, you're never quite sure, so. But I just want to remind everyone that the busing is available on the website, bus information. Staff update, you know, I gave you a staff update last meeting with, basically focused on some teachers and class size. This one is a little bit more updated, it's got the total enrollment too for each building on it and a breakdown by grade, then the kind of the approximate average class size. And, it has the, has the staffing. I believe there is one name that I omitted, which was like, I can't even remember now, occupational therapist or something?
Yeah, divine OT.
Who's, who's kind of district wide, so I guess no principal put it on the sheet. So we found it though, but that's, that was the one name omitted. And then we do, this does include a page with the instructional assistance on the, with the back. So just trying to give you an update, as far as teaching staff, people on a teaching contract at this point, we are fully staffed with the exception of the, the second nurse at Clinton Elementary School. So we have, we have our full-time nurse, we've had a second nurse, I guess, about, it's been, you know, typically somewhere around halftime or three-quarters time in the budget that we are still working on staffing because we hired the, the person who wasn't in that role is now our full-time nurse at the, at the middle school. And that is something that, I mean, ultimately, we'll try to move on that as fast as we can. I know technically nurses still become a school committee appointment for like the new hire, it's one of those, is one of those things.
So I think it's an advise and consent?
Okay.
That you present a qualified applicant, we have to agree.
They're going through the, they're going through the process. So the next meeting, hopefully by then, I will, I'll be ready to present, to present a qualified applicant. If we can get that person in a little bit sooner, just to, you know, on maybe even a temporary substitute role until we can have the meeting, we'll do that too, and then we'll present it to you. So I don't know if you have any questions on the staffing or not, or that's just, just trying to keep you in the loop?
I just want to say thank you, that I think, you know, having that level of detail will be really helpful come budget season and then subsequently when we're looking at, you know, how best to support the principals in their work moving forward, thank you.
And I think we've been trying to keep an eye on the budget as well. I've been working with, with Karen and trying to make sure that we are actually encumbering, you know, really encumbering those salaries and seeing where we stand right now. We're pretty good, I mean, if you look at the, the new hires versus the, the budgeted amounts that we're leaving versus the new hires, we're, we're in the positive. So we're in the positive in both the parents and the teachers right now, you know. Hopefully that, we'll wait for a couple of weeks to get the first payroll through and make sure that that's all exactly, exactly where it is, but right now, everything is tracking very well.
Last week, we had that job, the part-time job to register for the pre-K. Is that posted?
It was posted, I think they did the initial interviews last Friday, or they're in the process of interviewing.
They have a couple of them left at the door. They already interviewed a few of them, they have two more left. That's a real nice game there.
Great, staff orientation, the staff orientation was today, we had the, the whole district in. I don't think I was too boring, although I did talk a lot this morning. Really tried to give the staff an overview, a little bit of a background about me, some of my, my core values, my beliefs. Then we kind of transitioned that into a lot of the work that the administrative team, we all did together over the summer retreat, really looking at some of the survey data and information I gathered through the entry plan process to look at where we are and where we want to go. And then we kind of morphed that into the goals that we approved here at this, at this committee in last meeting. And then we kind of focused on, on a little bit what those goals look like and really spent a lot of time talking about the last goal, which is student engagement, because we had everyone in the district there and student engagement is really one of those goals that I think it pertains to just the whole culture of your district and it doesn't matter what role you're in, but that, that can be valuable information. And then we kind of, we just worked on a little, you know, some, let them know that I appreciate them and I'm gonna ask people to, to be reflective and work to get better, but it's okay. We want to push them out of their comfort zone, but we know when you do that, there's gonna be some hiccups along the way, but that's, that's okay and that's what we want to see. So, I think it was a good morning, people seemed very, very responsive, I got some good feedback. So, we're looking forward to tomorrow, tomorrow our topic, it's professional development tomorrow, so the instructional assistants will actually be in this room. They're coming in tomorrow, which is a day that's outside of their contracted days. We were able to use some grant funds to bring them in to offer some professional development. And that's more of a general one on just the role of the instructional assistant, trying to set some expectations. And with the teachers, it would be, I'll be running it, it'll be really that overview of the education evaluation system. My goal is hopefully by the time we can walk out of there tomorrow, that the product would be, teachers would be able to have at least a draft of their professional practice self-assessment, their professional practice goal, and maybe some of the, some of their professional practice goal educator plan. And then let them, that way we can walk through that process with them in the morning so that then they can look at their student data to do the student, the student component of that later.
Any questions, thoughts on any of that before we get into the policies?
Policy IMG, Animals in Schools, second reading, so this is the one we did last time. This is specifically addressing the therapy dog at the elementary school. So, I don't know if there's any additional questions on that or if we're okay to just approve it for a second reading? It's policy IMG.
So can we have a motion, and we can discuss this after the motion, but can we have a motion to approve for a second reading, policy IMG?
I'll make that motion.
Mrs. Zepantis?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Devault. Any thoughts or questions regarding policy IMG? So we'll take a vote, all those in favor of accepting for a second reading, policy IMG? Unanimous, thank you.
So the next policy was, we were gonna talk about here, was KFRA. That's the Building Use of Schools, Facilities, Policy and Procedures. And if you remember, we weren't really gonna change the policy unless we wanted to potentially exclude the, the Veterans Athletic Complex from the sentence where it says school facilities are available with no rental fee for the following. And then the other part was the fee schedule because the policy calls for a fee to be established by the superintendent and approved by the school committee. So there was a fee, a draft of a fee schedule that I gave you, which is in here. It's a whole fee schedule worksheet. So that was, I know, you know, like presented to you at the last meeting, we wanted to kind of think about it, so this isn't something we would necessarily be adopting tonight. If anything, this would be sort of a draft approval or if you have any certain comments or direction that you'd like me to, to go so that we can work this out, so we can get something a little more concrete in place.
First, thank you for following up on this. Thoughts, questions, comments?
So I did believe that if they, whoever is renting the fields, should it be the athletic fields, that they would be responsible for any damages. I guess I'm just a little bit concerned if there was some, if there was serious damage to the football field. Is, is that organization gonna be responsible, you know, even if it's a big bill, to have to repair it or? I know in years past, it's, you know, I don't think anybody was allowed on that field except for varsity sports teams, so. And then if something should happen that would inhibit one of our varsity teams to not play their game because of that, you know, I just feel like that could be a.
Well, I know, I mean, part of it is that they're supposed to have that liability waiver, that liability, you know, proof of liability insurance, so if they have that, then, you know, that, that would be something that should fall under that umbrella is if for some reason there was a, you know, they drove a truck on the field because a kid injured his legs and they put in big ruts, you know, that's something that, that either they'd have to pay to fix or that's something that they could make a liability plan for. So I think, you know, that's the intent of the policy, it's a matter of us making sure that we're following through with the policy and making sure that we're getting those liability certificates and that proof of liability insurance when we do the rest of the business.
So, you, I think, previously you mentioned that you did comparisons to other communities?
Yeah, I mean, this, so this fee schedule is, is very similar to a few other communities that were more further in Western Mass, because a lot of the research I did for this was maybe when I was in another district. But, that was where I got a lot of those, those other numbers from, so I was able to pull those sample policies and fee schedules and kind of that's how I built this. So, I also tried to work with Mary, who has been doing, you know, the, the fee schedules that we have so that these things sort of align kind of with our, with sort of our past practice, if you will, for, for what we've kind of been charging. The problem is, we haven't really had a, a firm guideline, so it's sort of been a, you know, case-by-case basis of what we're gonna charge. And that's, that's really, I think, what the purpose of this policy is to eliminate. It's just so that it doesn't become a case-by-case basis, it becomes, you know, you're either a qualified organization that we're not gonna charge rent to, or you're not and here's what the fee schedule is.
Basically, it covers our expenses, right? Beginning of the day, we're not, we're not making money off of this.
Right, that's, the goal is to not really make money off of it. The goal is to, is to compensate for, you know, sort of the natural wear and tear. You figure if you're renting a classroom, you're also using, you know, the people that are there are using your toilet paper, you've got the electricity on, you've got, you know, like all those different little costs that, that are in there. So, yeah, the goal is not to make it a moneymaker, you know, it's, it's just to try to compensate the costs and wear and tear. Food break.
Which is good.
Well, that money can then, so then a way it would happen is this money would then go into rental of facilities revolving account. That revolving account can really only be used to repair the facilities and make those improvements. So the money's going, you know, it's not like we're, we're renting facilities so we can pay for teachers. We're renting facilities so we can maintain our buildings.
You're not allowed to use it for anything.
No, I mean, that works for me, I think.
What was that, Karen?
It's covering air.
You're really not allowed to use the rental facilities monies for anything but.
Go back, Mr. Devault.
So the superintendent, superintendent still has the ability to, if the field becomes like overused, you can deny people access to the field, you know, this doesn't guarantee somebody has access to the field. For example, say if we gave permission to three or four teams in a row and the field really started to look, the condition of the field started to deteriorate, you still have to approve?
Yeah, we still have the discretion, I think, you know, based on, based on the, we said certainly based on the conditions, based on the, you know, the frequency of use, I guess, so.
Okay.
So we could look at that. I mean, we could.
I mean, it looks like number three is kind of, it says groups receiving permission are restricted to the dates and hours approved and to the building area facilities specified. As long as, I just want to make sure in, in the writing here, that's just clear that, like, superintendent still has final say over.
Right, it doesn't mean anyone who can scrap together $20, $50 can rent the varsity football field to do whatever they want. You know, I mean, there's still a little discretion of, of how that's, you know, how, how that's meeting the, beating the purposes of, of what we even say for the policy about, you know, who really should be able to rent.
Right.
So, with number six?
Yep.
And I, I know you made reference back to liability insurance, but can you be more specific that they have to name us as the certificate holder?
Us the school district or us the school committee?
So the individual that has the private policy would name us under as the certificate of insurance, so they're protecting us under their policy and so on, they would do it by the date of the advent that they would give us a certificate?
They'd have a little like rider with our name and everything for that, didn't they?
I don't send them a contract that he would sign until I got the certificate of liability in front of him. I'd have to have it put out somewhere.
Alright, well, that's good.
And then I keep them on file and then I email them a whole pack that includes their agreement, his, his contract and another copy of the liability.
So they certificate the liability policy and then there's a certain standard of limits that you would want to see before you would approve it, correct?
Yeah, I mean, typically, you're gonna, you know, we, I guess, you know, basically what's the, what is the event and what's the likelihood of us needing it, you know, for those standards? But, you know, I think, I think we could, that could be up to this committee if you wanted to set a minimum standard of liability coverage or if we just want to say, you know, that this is intense discretion, you know, if it's something that.
I believe that, your discretion's fine to me, it's just that.
Understanding that they're, yeah.
No, I would support that as well, I think that, you know, this is one of those areas where it's, it's, I've long thought it's prudent for us to get as clear as we possibly can in this area because, you know, this, this is one of those areas where it falls between that gray area of our fiduciary responsibility to the town and our advocacy for the schools and the, and, and, you know, the first right of refusal, I guess, of the Clinton Public Schools to use the facilities. So, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and all the thoughtful discussion.
Well, I mean, like I said, the, the policy is the existing policy, so there's not, that's not really even a change. The only real change would just be the fee schedule worksheet. And if you guys are comfortable with us going with that, we can go with that if you wanted to approve it. And, it, it can always be revised, you know, so if, if it's, if it's something that as we live with it and we feel that, you know, we're getting feedback that this is unreasonable or, or if something is, is causing some sort of undue hardship and it's not the intent that we had with this, we can always bring it back to the committee, it's not like we have to, you know, feel like we made a mistake and fix it. But at least it gets something in, something in writing to follow.
And I would just like to leave that the policy leaves room to your discretion?
Yeah.
So that, yes, there is a policy here, it's a guideline to follow, but it leaves you to still, at the end of the day, have that discretion to make a decision that might be in favor or not in favor of some things right here.
I'll make a motion that we.
Mr. Hastings?
Just one quick question, I haven't seen the policy, so I'm not sure. The custodians fees and their responsibility, that's all, is it all included?
Yeah, there is, there's, it's in there for the custodians or calf workers if the kitchen is in there or technology staff.
If they work on a Sunday, is that the regular rate that they give for?
That, that's part that would be filled in on this worksheet.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So someone's gonna fall back to their contract, their rates?
Yeah, it would be based on the contract, so if it's like I have to call them in for a minimum of so many hours at such a rate, then that's what it's gonna be, you know, and that's, again, it goes back to, to Brennan's point, it's not, you know, we're not trying to make money on it, but it's, we gotta cover our expenses, yeah.
And that's all, that's all explicit when you're completing the contract. So they, they know what the costs are occurring before they use, okay. So we have a motion on the floor to?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we accept the first reading of KFRH.
I'll second. It's, well, it's, so it's, yes, it's the, it's the draft with the licensing. It's, well, it's, so it's, yes, it's the, it's the draft with the licensing agreement schedule built in.
So we want to keep it as, we'll keep it as a first reading, so we have one more week to go at it, or do you want to, because it's just the fee schedule as a subset of the policy, we might be able just to approve it in one night, or we could do a first and second reading, whatever you're...
Do you feel you need to think about it more?
This is the same fee schedule we showed us last week.
Yeah.
Do you want to amend your motion?
Sure, I'll amend it, it's for adoption.
So we'll keep, so basically, we're, we're keeping the policy, KFRA, the same, and what the motion, and then it would be then is just to approve the, the fee schedule established, to be established by the superintendent from, yeah.
Do you, do you want to second the revised motion? You seconded the first motion.
I'll second the revised motion.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion in front of us?
So, yes, so number nine, any activity that takes place in Clinton School Building must have at least one custodian present at the time of the activity, unless otherwise determined by the principal and the superintendent. So my question is, I know this is a problem with some groups, if they, like, use the facility for eight hours on a Saturday, like, so they have to, they have to have a custodian there the whole time for that eight hours, or does it, could it be, does it have to be a custodian, or can it be another representative from the school? I mean, obviously, at some point, the, the gym, whatever's being used, has to get cleaned, like, that day, but does, does the custodian really need to be present for the entire day?
Uh, I think it depends, you know, I mean, I think we'd have to be careful, you know, without having the, the custodial contract in front of me, I hesitate to answer that question too quickly.
Right.
But I do think that there, most people are reasonable that there are ways that we can, we can work around that in terms of, you know, I think, for example, if it was something that the gym needed to be cleaned, they were using it for eight hours, if we could get, if somehow we could figure out how to get the building open, so that they could use that facility, maybe the custodian comes in for just the minimum number of hours towards the end of that timeframe to clean up or something like that, so.
Yeah.
I mean, there might be ways to, to do, you know, what makes sense. I mean, obviously, the whole goal is, we want to, we want to do what's in the best interest of kids, and we know that a lot of these activities are supporting the kids that go to our schools, so we want to try to support them as best we can, but at the same time, we just want to make sure that we're, we're covering our, our costs and maintaining our buildings and our facilities as well. So it's just really trying to find that balance, and I think, you know, I think there is leeway, even on the fee schedule, there's some leeway, that talks about superintendent may waive required staffing or staffing charges based on alignment with other events or other extenuating circumstances, so I think it does, you know, like Michael's saying, it gives me that little bit of that flexibility, that if we can, we can work something out, going in, just to be careful, this is a, the collective bargaining agreements, and I want to make sure that we don't, we don't walk into something else that way.
Good question, any others? All right, so the motion before us, I believe, is to accept KFRA, to, to accept the fee schedule, proposed fee schedule worksheet as a part of KFRA. All those in favor?
Thank you.
So certainly we can, if there's any, if you guys get any other feedback from this, or any other things, as we go through and start using it, certainly we can always reexamine it, we can talk about it, so we want to do, we want to do what's in the best interest of the kids in the community, and also the schools. Policy JICD is the Substance Abuse Prevention and Substance Abuse Education Policy, we approved it for a first reading last time, so at the policy, there's also the opt-out letter attached that we would send home to students, so I don't know if we have any parents, excuse me, so I don't know if we have any, any questions, or if you're okay with approving that for the adoption.
So we'll entertain a motion to approve Policy JICD for a second reading.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's made by Mrs. Zepantis, seeking a second. I'll second, Mr. Revolus, and discussion. They've ended. There being none, all those in favor of accepting Policy JICD? Thank you.
So there's a packet of policies that we can, that we had proposed, that we said could potentially eliminate. I'm still not comfortable eliminating ABA, I think there's a lot in ABA that I think that, until I find out exactly where every other thing in there lives, I think it's good for us to keep it for now, because I wouldn't want us to not have, I'd rather us be redundant than not have something, okay? So ABA, I would, I would recommend that we keep at this time, but the policies, and even the ABA 1A, we can keep that as well. The ones after that, there's the IHA- E, the JA, JA E, JBA, JFE1, and I think it's J, oh, JFE2, and JLDE, this whole packet, and JRAR. These ones are all ones that are not, they do not correspond to any MASC policy, some of them are ones that, some of them are MASC policies that the MASC has actually said, these are now redundant, you don't need them anymore. For example, I know that's where student, student harassment falls under, they said now with, if you have the bullying policy, which we adopted last time, that we do not need, you don't need to have that one. Some of these policies are quoting laws specifically, quoting regulations specifically, and the MASC advisory is that you don't, typically, you don't need to have a policy that just states the law, because you have, the law will supersede your policy anyway, and if the law change, changes, it's one less thing that you need to, you need to change. So, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with, if you wanted to make a motion to, to remove these policies, we could, however the committee decides, we could go one by one through them, you could just do the whole packet minus ABA, it's, it's up to you.
Well, I appreciate the, this thoroughness of going through all these policies and letting us know, instead of just kind of rubber stamping them every single year, just not realizing the ones that we don't even need, so I think this is great. And with that, I will make a motion that we eliminate IHA- E, JA, JA E, JBA, JFE1, JFE2, JLDE, and JRAR.
Yeah, sounds good. I know it ends with JRAR, so I'll second that motion.
Motion being made and seconded, is there any further discussion on the elimination of these policies? There being none, all those in favor?
So is there a follow-through on the ABA policy then, and, and the ABA one, I think it was?
The ABA, yeah, I mean, I'm going to keep working on that to see, because there's not a corresponding MASC policy, but when you look at it, it's a very, that policy is very comprehensive, it has a lot of nondiscrimination stuff in it, and I'm not exactly sure why it's not a corresponding MASC policy. I don't know if it's, we just have maybe the number, the, the, the lettering system wrong on it, or if it's, we combined a couple different policies into one, I'm just, you know, especially given, you know, we're trying to make sure that we're compliant with all these things, I don't, like I said, I don't want us to be behind the ABA, so we'll keep working on that, and I'm sure, you know, in November, when we go to the conference, we'll do a whole nother policy update that we can start, we can start working on, and just make sure that we're staying in compliance with the MASC recommendations.
Is that something that we should seek legal counsel for, or that your, your office feels comfortable that you can find a connection?
Yeah, we can handle that, and, and I think for now, you know, I mean, I don't think, I don't think it's the, it's not, it's not an overly urgent policy, I think we know what it says, and it's there, but it just, you know, it's something we want to follow through.
At worst, it's just a redundancy that needs to be called. Thank you.
And the last thing, this is faculty handbooks, I don't know if you have the faculty handbooks in your package, in hard copy, you have them as well?
Yeah.
Really didn't, just like the student handbooks, we really didn't make a lot of changes to the faculty handbooks, there might have been some minor revisions, just to make sure things were, little tweaks were current, we did a couple things, like the bullying intervention plans in the back, we updated maybe the changes that we made in the bullying plan there, so, you know, there's, like I said, it's really just kind of making sure that, we just reviewed them to make sure that there was nothing in there that was inconsistent with the policies we changed. I think moving forward, you know, one of the big focus today was expectations and communication, and one of those big things we said was, was the handbooks, and, you know, policies, handbooks, and collective bargaining, so I think this is an area of focus that we will spend more time revising as we go through this year, but just to get us started this year, I'd just be lucky for you to approve these handbooks as, as written.
And to be clear, that these are the, the staff handbooks, the guide to being a staff member in these particular schools, different than the student parent handbooks?
Correct, yeah. Student parent handbooks, we did last, last...
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the elementary school, middle school, and high school faculty handbooks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor of accepting the three schools' faculty handbooks?
I'm sorry, I thought you were waiting for you to say something else.
I probably should. There was something in my head, actually. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So moved.
All right, I think that concludes my report. Mr. Chairman, turn it over to you.
Thank you. So, I, I wanted to propose the idea of us having a conversation about, you know, looking at tools that might be available to us to help educate us as a committee, to help provide our new superintendent, our new team, with either, you know, validation of, or tools for best practices that we might not have considered in the past, and so, you know, I'm, I'm wondering if it isn't time for us to have a discussion about what we currently do to look at our practices in terms of an audit process, both for, from a financial perspective, from a, from a, a facilities perspective, from, and I think it's, it's prudent, it could potentially be prudent for us to get ahead of our coordinated program review as well, and to look at, with an independent lens, you know, what are the things that we do really well in Clinton Public Schools? What are our practices and procedures that, that we should celebrate, and what are some things that we don't necessarily look at or haven't considered, because we have to live it from day to day? Aside from the fact that I, I think, you know, as, as a committee, this is a great opportunity for us to continue to grow as a board, and be able to have the tools, and I think have the conversations around that independent look, in being able to advocate for and support, you know, the information that we get from meeting to meeting. So, I'm tossing this out there to us as a, as a, as a topic of conversation, I think it's a worthwhile conversation, I think it's a good time to have the conversation, and I'm interested in, in what your thoughts might be.
If there was ever a time that we were going to do it, I think it would make sense to do it now with, with a new superintendent, I think it'd be a good chance to kind of take a self-evaluation of ourselves moving forward, so, I mean, I, without any details, but just the premise of it, that sounds, I would entertain that.
So, so I want to be clear, too, that there are, you know, it's not a novel concept, there, there are auditing processes that happen through the municipal side of the school department, through the school department, through other review type cycles, and I don't know, Mr. Superintendent, if, if you want to weigh in on, you know, some of the things that we actually do, and we certainly entertain more questions than you have.
So just, yeah, just to be clear, if you're talking about sort of a financial review, it is important to note that every year, we have to submit an end-of-year report, and that end-of-year report is audited from the, basically from the school side. In addition, obviously, all of our finances are part of the bucket of the Town of Clinton's finances, and the Town of Clinton also has an annual review, so really, our information is essentially almost audited twice every year, anyway. Now, one thing, there was a, you know, this was, this is a, last year's audit, and there is a very specific scope of, you know, what are the things that they're looking for, the scope and objectives for the audit, and these are usually set forth basically by the DESE, they're going to tell us what they want us to investigate, there are certain things that they might change in their end-of-year reports each year, based on different changes in their regulations, or how they're tracking spending. This, this particular audit last year had been done by, is it Bill Freyer, is that how it's pronounced? And he's also been the town's account, uh, town's auditing firm as well. I guess Bill's no longer doing this for the municipal side, he's getting out of the municipal business.
He just informed us, I had just found out last week, that that firm has decided not to do the independent audit, so the town will be looking for a new audit firm.
Which means so will we, okay, so we'll be basically looking for a new, a new audit firm for our end-of-year report, and typically, our end-of-year report is, our end-of-year report will probably be done within a month or so, right?
Usually, I get that end-of-year report done by like October, but we can't complete the process until the town is done with all their information, then we can do that, but usually they'll, they do do mine before they complete the town's audit, and then they also do the food service.
So, and they do the food service audit as well, yeah. So one, which is a separate audit, food services also audit independently, and there are also different audits for potentially individual grant programs, because we have a Title I audit, I think, this year, so there are different things like that that do happen. But what we could potentially do is, you know, one, one way to do it is to look at the, the scope and objective for the end-of-year report audit, if we wanted to, since we have to find a new, a new vendor, we could, we could talk more specifically about what the scope and objectives of the audit we want, and maybe we build in some more for this year, to kind of have them look at some, some bigger processes, or we could try to look at a separate, a separate firm altogether, I think Masbo might have some programs where they come and do some of this work, I know Nezdeck will do some budgeting type, and HR even, and look at those processes together, so, so I think we can continue to explore those, I think, you know, I think it is a, it's, it's worthwhile, you know, I think, I think, you know, I think Karen does, does a nice job, and I think she's, she, you know, keeps everything in order, but I just think that, just like anything, it's always, it's always worth an extra set of eyes to, to review something, and just make sure that we're moving forward, we're doing best practices. I also think that we have the town looking to move towards a unified accounting system, but they're actually, they have two different vendors coming in later this week, I'll be attending the presentations on Thursday and Friday from the vendors for that process, and once they move to that new unified accounting system, that'll cause some, some changes on how we might have to do some things, but, you know, we want to make sure we have our, our ducks in a row, so we're ready for that, that implementation, so. I don't know if you want the next step, I can continue to reach out and try to come back at a, at a future meeting with some potential scopes of service and quotes, or if you guys have anything specific here you want to point me, I can work in that direction.
What are your thoughts?
I'd rather, if you don't mind, you know, go out and search now, rather wait, wait on, on the town, and I know, like you said, I know we're going to do this coordinated thing with the accounting, but in the meantime, why wait? You know, would hurt, even if we, if we have a separate, separate audit, and then, basically, we get two different eyes on ours anyway, so, you know, we'd rather wait on theirs and have the same person, you know, who knows how long that'll take, and that's just my recommendation, but, see what's out there.
So, I would agree, you know, I agree with what Ed had said, and what Brennan has said, I, I think we want to go and see what tools are out there, what scopes of sequence, you know, what are they going to go through, what are they going to look at, and it's great that the town's doing their piece, and that they're going to continue to grow that, so maybe we need to look at tools that are more school-specific, and that tied back to the regulations that we're trying to be standard with, and I know, you know, we try every day to do that, but if we can just, you know, have, you know, maybe what surrounding towns have used, other towns that are highly regarded, and, and see what's out there for options, come back with what the scopes of those are, what the pricing of those are, and, and, you know, move forward as far as an option for that for that.
Yep, so I think we can, we can work on that, I'm sure we can get, like, a Masbo listserv, or, or even go down there and just kind of get, strike out some information on, on maybe some, some different firms or organizations that might be worth it, and I'll try to get some proposals of, of like a scope, you know, like a scope and objectives of it, and, and cost. a scope, you know, like a scope and objectives of it and, and cost. And I'll try to bring those back to you as soon as I can. Let's see if I can get you something by September 11th. If not, we'll shoot for the 25th, but I'll try to get you something quickly when we can get it. Okay?
We'd be envisioning just a, for a deliverable, like, a report, or would be, would this be like a, like a presentation to the board when it's finished, or I figure, I guess that's, we'll figure that out as we, as we move forward.
Yeah, I think if he updates us with what's available out there, and if they have the ability, you know, to give us a breakdown with a presentation, that's great, but if it's not available, maybe a blank sheet as far as what's available in the home.
Yeah, most audits are going to conclude with their findings and what you need to, you know, what, what they're recommending that you change, and I think that we'd be able to, if they're not going to present it, we could present it.
So we're not really looking to change what we normally do. I mean, we do, the year-end report gets done, and then it gets audited every year. So I guess I'm, I'm not totally there. So what are we looking to do to, to find a different, I know we, we need to find a new vendor because the current one isn't doing it anymore, but are we, I'm not really sure.
So, you know, I, I mean, I look at the process as a combination of not only validation, and, and I want to be very clear, we've never had more detail than we've had with Karen and Ed, but, you know, I will just speak for myself, I don't always know what I'm looking at and whether or not that, and Karen does her humble best to try and explain it in simple terms so that I can understand, but, you know, I don't know if those are, you know, considered best practices. I mean, they seem to work for us, but I don't know if, if we, you know, have considered as board, as a school, a district, you know, whether there are different ways to go about not only the financial piece, but programmatic piece, and, and just looking at, not necessarily a comprehensive approach to it, but, but we don't know what we don't know sometimes. And I think having, you know, an independent team or person that, you know, has had multiple exposures to a lot of different approaches, I think can only help to, one, validate the things that we do well, and, two, provide us with some deliverables, some actionable items where we might want to think about a different way of looking at these approaches. So that, that's sort of my, my thought process, to give our new superintendent the potential for tools that, you know, that we haven't considered perhaps before.
So if I can, what I'm hearing, I believe, is that, you know, a lot of times what the audits are going to look at is, you know, they're going to look at your numbers, and they're going to look at your, they're going to look at your backup evidence for those numbers, and they might try to see where those numbers came from. But I think what we're looking for is maybe a, a more of a broader step back of just sort of our, you know, our, it could be, how do we, what's our purchasing practice, and how are we generating POs, and what's the step that they go from initiated to processed and all that kind of stuff? And there might be some ways that we could get some, we might find some efficiencies, we might find some areas that are potential, you know, leading to potential redundancies or something like that, and we can, we can look to maybe streamline those processes a little bit. So I think it's fine, I think between Karen and I, we can look and see, see what's out there. And I think, you know, it wouldn't be a bad idea to include potentially some, that, sort of, some of that overlap into human resources as well, and looking at sort of, you know, some, some of those things. So, so I'll try to, you know, I think we got a, we got an action step here that, that I'll, I'll start trying to see what's out there and try to get some quotes. I will say in some of the preliminary things that I've reached out for and some different, some of these things, it's hard to get hard numbers from people, but we'll see what we can do.
At the end of the year, just, we just have to justify the numbers that we're reporting with that audit. I mean, this audit is going to be, they're going to give suggestions on how, you know, we potentially, there may be some, you know, something we're not doing that we might be able to do that would be better practices.
I think that would be the difference. Not that audits, audits might have some practices in there, because if they look at your backup information, they're going to obviously see the result of some of those processes. But this only meant wanting to focus even more so on the, on the process, not just the numbers.
I'm not sure if this is something you might know, know leaning towards, but when I think of it, because the audit that we do have, you know, they look at all the things that the department of Ed wants us to look at, they look at grants and all that. But I think what I'm hearing is that maybe you want to look further into, like, policies and procedures manual and internal controls.
Yeah.
Is that more like?
Yeah, I think that's true.
Because the internal controls, I think, is something that does need to be looked at. We need to have more procedures on internal controls on different areas. And then Annette did do a year-long, just did a year-long last year with Masbo and did do policies and procedures manual. But I think that also needs to be looked at to make sure it's something that we do want to use more, and then to get people to use it. Because those are the two things, because the audit is just, they're looking at the stuff that the department of Ed does, and they do that every year, and there's nothing that will change in what they're going to look at in the audit. But those two things, I do think, oh, we can need to be with that.
I think that sounds like what we're talking about. I just, I think, you know, my, my initial thought process around it was that this is, you know, it's a great time for us to sort of invest in what, you said it better, in, in what kind of efficiencies we may gain as a result. And, and if, and if it serves the purpose of, of nothing other than validation of all the great things that we do, I think it's nice to have that validation for the municipal side when we go to talk about what we truly need in our budget. Well, thank you. Thanks for the discussion. So the, the next bullet item is, is sort of tangential to that, that, and I think we've, we've covered it to some degree, but just if, if there is a way that we can help support the Department of Special Education and be as proactive as we can so that we, we lead to a smooth coordinated program review, whether this process serves that or if there are other things that, that we can support in terms of resources for you, for the team, I, you know.
So, yes, we have reached out, I talked to Kathy about this, and she, she's all for having a special education kind of review. She said she was, she was in favor of it when she got hired, you know, so, so I think that that's, that's good. We've reached out to at least one firm, we got a price back from them, and it was, it was very high. So we have kind of pursued a sort of a, an alternative option, reaching out to a retired special education director who might be able to come in and sort of provide that sort of independent review that we're, we're kind of looking for, just to kind of look at, you know, maybe focus specifically on some of the CPR compliance, that's sort of the gateway, but also kind of looking at that big picture of some of the, just in general, our programming, how the district placements and transportation and all those different facets that, that cost a lot of money, you know? And, and sometimes if you can invest a little money to have a fresh set of eyes look at it, you know, if that means, you know, we might have one little tweak in practice that that can pay for itself three times over. So, you know, I think, like I said, Kathy's on board, we're trying to explore different avenues. We'll keep you posted on that. I think we're supposed to have a meeting with, I said, at least the one retired special education director in the, in the coming weeks, and we'll try to see what, how that, that's productive or not. Same thing, we'll try to get some sort of scope of services and, and price and bring that to you before we go forward.
About some questions? Thank you. Last, lastly tonight, under my card is, do we have an update on our facilities subcommittee?
We meet, last we got, we're still waiting to hear back from, we're down to 10, right? And the interviews are, I know, some of them are set. The 31st is the first.
That's Thursday, I think, right? Thursday's the first, the interviews will start.
Well, now we're only 10, but it's like four, four nights, three hours a night, and obviously, if they drop off, the mic's still filling.
I think at the last meeting, there might have been four that were already confirmed, two for each of the first two nights, and there were others that he was still working on, on firming.
So we'll meet Thursday.
Okay. Ed, you might have an update for us in September?
No.
11th? If not, the 11th, then.
I'd say by the, yeah, I'd say with the process works by the 25th, the first round of interviews should be done, so that might be able to get a, shoot a schedule.
Thank, thank you both for your, well, three of you, for your work in that area. So, exciting development.
Can I show one other facilities?
Please.
Yep.
I did hear from the insurance company today about the Ash Street playground. I didn't get a lot of detail, it was more of like that we're still working on it, but he did say that they have all of the quotes and numbers together for the labor, for the removal, for the cost of replacement, for the structure. What they were still working on right now was basically the, the surface, the rubberized mulch, and some of the, the perimeter, whatever that's called. The, so they were working on those last couple things, and hopefully get back to us within a day or two of what the, what it would look like. From there, you know, there was a recommendation by the, by the playground vendor that really the, he said that the, you know, there's two structures there. The smaller structure also had burn damage, it's got a, some burn marks on it and a hole on it. And his recommendation, he said, that's, that's an older model that they're not going to be able to just replace. You can't just get the slide and put a new slide on it. And so, his recommendation though, he said that that, that piece of equipment doesn't really belong on that playground because it's not really the right age for the group that we have using. So what we're looking at potentially doing is saying, if we didn't replace that one, if they just took that one away, now that it's damaged, we might be able to use some of that kind of replacement cost to maybe replace the entire structure instead of just from like the damaged portion over. So that was the discussion we had. I don't know what those numbers are going to look like, and certainly I'll try to keep everyone informed as we get more information. And, you know, my hope would be, once we get the numbers and we see what it's going to look like, we can share it with, with the committee. At that point, we can talk about some other things, you know, as far as what else would we like to get done? Because I think that, I do think we could potentially do maybe some fundraising efforts. I think that maybe we might be able to use some rental facilities money if we need to, because I think that if we're replacing this thing, we want to do it right. Because if we just do the half that got burned, that means we just have another not good half sitting there that's going to need replaced in, in five more years anyway, or two more years anyway. So I think we'd like to do it right. So I'm still waiting for the final information, but they're still working on it, they haven't forgotten about it, we're not doing nothing about it, it's still moving forward.
Thank you. So we have, I don't know that, I don't think we're prepared to, to give a full facility readiness report. I think some of us have been able to meet with our assigned areas, and some of us have, are in process. So I think we can revisit that in September unless anyone wanted to share anything in particular at this point.
I just, I, I talked to, I owe you a document, I, I, before I did that, I walked through the high school last Friday, so I'll get it to you probably tomorrow, I'll just send it to you directly if that's fine. And then, I do want to say off on the record, I was, I've been telling everybody, I was amazed that, I really was, I hadn't been in the high school, and to find out it was 20 years old, it was just, it was immaculate. I know Dr. Meyer walked through with me, and it wasn't just the, the school, the appearance of the school, but the administration, the faculty, some of the teachers were, I know Mr. Morris who was there and Mr. McGrell, you know, the one who came up, offered anything we needed, you know, walked through, gave us the history of the, of the room and everything, and Mr. McGrell took us through the gym and everything, it was, and we actually went over, spent about five minutes watching the football team practice, and it was, it was pretty motivating, I had a great time, I really did. Needed to go back to work.
And I had a great opportunity to go through the elementary school with Dr. Meyer, you know, principal, head custodian. I, I will have to say, I go through buildings, you know, every day for multiple buildings, and extremely impressed with the diligence that's been put into that building. You know, the head custodian with the team, with the administration, really are taking up rather than maintenance, they're doing things that are outside some, any custodians would normally do, in there fixing motors, making sure things are done in a timely fashion, you know, taking and saving a lot of money for us as far as chairs and the repairs that are being done, and they're being done in a timely way. I was extremely impressed that I brought, they looked great, and I was also impressed to hear that the head custodian, Miguel, with assistance of the principal, has developed a gap improvement plan. And, you know, that was something that they took on on their own initiative, and they're working in that direction, so it really helps all of us out as far as what's needed there as far as what our next steps are. So I was pleasantly surprised and very pleased with what's being done.
Great. And I guess in the interest of time, we would take half the reports, and we'll report on the other half at a subsequent meeting.
Okay.
Any old business? You know what, I will say under old business, I'm sorry because I didn't carry in the chair person's report, and I apologize for that, an update from our marketing subcommittee, so I'll, I'll pull that in under old business if there is any report.
Done.
I will say that the incredible marketing opportunity with our fund, the superintendent's fund of the sun event, it was just a, just a tremendous way to reorient our parents and students and, and some from other school districts to, to spend a day with Clinton High School staff and, and middle school and elementary school staff, the administrators were there, food was terrific, and, and free classes. And so.
I thought it was going to be an angry mob after me when I ran out in 10 minutes, but...
So, but just, just a...
You got the press ones.
I got the press ones.
Just a wonderful blend of, of a learning opportunity and a community building opportunity, and so please, on behalf of this committee, thank everyone that was involved in putting together such a wonderful day. Any new business?
I just, I actually want to take a minute just to compliment you, Joel, and to let you know how much I appreciate the transparency that I, that I've witnessed in the last few weeks with really keeping us updated and sending us emails. The communication has just been excellent, and I feel very well informed, and I appreciate that. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a Kelly green tie that I want to be very clear.
I was, I was going to compliment you on that as well. I like that.
Do you wear that all day?
I wore it all day in my role where a darker shade of tie is warranted, so.
And also, Dr. Meyer, thank you, you know, as well, because I think your transparency is helping us out a great deal as well, so through the two of you, you do a fantastic job, thank you both.
All right. And thank all of you.
I'm not thanking anyone. Me either.
We, we are going to executive session. Before I do that, I want to wish our principals good luck on your, your first day, Wednesday, and, and thank you for all of your efforts. I will say, Mrs. Sargent, thank you for just a wonderful barbecue orientation for incoming fourth grade parents and children, and what a warm and welcoming environment. So good luck, principals, with everything that you do, and I hope it's a wonderful start to your school year.
You know what transparent means, I don't know what it means.
Go home and get some rest, will you?
At least a transparent. Under Chapter 30A, Section 21 of Massachusetts General Law, Open Meeting Law, the committee will enter into executive session to discuss contracts and negotiations. The committee will not reconvene, this requires a voice vote.
Yes. Wes Eliana.
Aye.
Brendan Beattie.
Joel Bates.
Tina Zephan.
Ed Ross.
Aye.